Hello there, Facebook and Zoom. I think at some point Jared will jump in here. Check my hair. Trying to get things rolling here if I'm live. Looking in with some other folks. Also the test zoom. Get the video in the show, can't even figure out where it is. Alright. I'm not going to start a watch party. Looks like we've got three folks popping in here, at least on Facebook. I don't know if any of them are Salem UMC folks, I see Paul see there. There's Jared. Facebook is being sluggish, but I might mean I can't see it as well here, but you might be able to. Hey Jared.
Good morning preacher.
You hear me? Hey, good. I can hear you and you can hear me.
Awesome.
Can we see each other?
Yeah. Can you see me on there now?
I think I've got Facebook going here. I look really sluggish on the Facebook Live, but I guess what could happen is maybe you and I can have a conversation here. And then they'll see it later, or they're seeing it now. I'm not 100% sure. Oh Lori, Lori Page says hey. So Shelley's on there, maybe, maybe one of y'all can tell us if it's working okay on Facebook Live. But we'll go ahead and kind of get started here. So as we begin our town hall meeting. Jared, do you have, are you all having a potluck there at home? We usually have a potluck with us.
No. No, we're not. We had our scoop full of peanut butter by tradition and banana and lots of coffee. So that's not. That's potluck at the Richie household.
Alright, so if you're following suit there, go get your scoop of peanut butter and your coffee and come back and join us. But uh. Doesn't seem, doesn't seem too lagged on Facebook Live, a little bit not choppy. So I think once this is done, maybe the recording will be okay, but we'll, let me do this too. And let's see if I can figure out how. If I have a record option here, we can record this. Record on this computer. That way we have this if we need to share it with others Jared.
Absolutely.
So let's, let's pray as we begin. God, we love you and we thank you for technology and the ways to do things creatively. And as we kind of share the state of things at Salem United Methodist Church and as Jared and I kind of have a discussion. We ask that you guide us and direct us to paint an optimistic picture, but at the same time, a realistic place of where we are. And we want to be encouraging Lord, just as you encourage us with your, your word and who you are and who you've called us to be. So we pray all these things in Jesus' name and in the power and the presence of the Holy Spirit. Amen, amen.
Amen.
Well Jared, it looks as though this time of social distancing is going longer. Schools are canceled at least through April 17th, but likely it's going to be longer. The Arkansas Conference of the United Methodist Churches suggesting that we remain closed through April. Before we go too much further, I do want to say if you have any questions you want to post on Facebook Live, I'm kind of taking a look at that too, and we'll try and answer those for you. But I wanted to turn things over to Jared here to kind of report. I've been joking a lot with him that he's kind of our Esther. In his vocation, he is also our board chair for just such a time as this. So he knows some stuff. That's very useful to the church as we continue to operate in our new normal for now at least. So Jared, I'll ask you to take it away for now.
So um. As y'all all know, I work for the health department and we're setting up a command center and I study this stuff on a daily basis. Help the governor with his closing of things and, and I guess the the most important thing that, that the state of Arkansas is doing to try to help protect people is to keep people at home and we're practicing that right now by, by social distancing as they're calling it. And just trying to, to stay away from, from any gathering and yeah, they've got a target number of 10 people or more that they're actually enforcing to, to hopefully people will will not spread secondary to that. Right now, just on the, on the healthcare front, as we all know, they don't have a, an actual of way of curing this or a way of, of stopping it other than to isolate and stop the spread of this. And it is affecting so many populations right now that it's, it's it's, it's almost unfathomable from, from the numbers that we see. And I can share some of that with you and some of it I have to be cautious with, but, but I'll share the, the, the fact that we have places that we're opening right now in Little Rock and there'll be more for people who don't have a place to go and that they can isolate and the folks will be fed there and secure there and, and will be, be treated right. It's not going to be like you see in the movies by no means it's going to be some old, old businesses that have given us some, some buildings to go in and, and to set up and to make clean areas for people. So that's going on, on the forefront that we're trying to accomplish. But again, I can't stress, you know, the, the things that's been, the CDC has recommended you staying out of crowds of people. If you don't have to get out, don't. If you can, you know, have some things delivered and do it. Obviously washing your hands is a, is a big thing here. The supplies chains have, have run out, if you will, of, of different items like hand sanitizer. If you was to go to try to buy hand sanitizer right now, you're not going to find any. Just do a, a search on, on any platform and you won't find it anywhere. There are a couple of distilleries which I thought was kind of neat. They're stepping up Rock Town Distillery in Little Rock. And there's another one, I can't think of the name of it. They're actually halting product sales to, to make hand sanitizer, because hand sanitizer is to be effective should be about 70 to 91% alcohol. And so that's what they produce for a living. And so that's what they're going to make for, for the state and they're actually producing it by the leader right now. It's one of the things that I've just learned of this week that they were doing and they're going to start distributing that through different places. And you can actually go to some of these places and pick it up, which I thought was, was kind of unique. You just go there and it's in a Rock Town bottle, but it's meant for your hands. Just for cleaning purposes, but, but again, just from the healthcare point, I want to just, just stress staying at home. If, if you must get out. You just be cognitive of where you're going and you know, try to limit your, your exposure to people. If you have people with, with conditions in your household, it is very important that you, you try to keep those folks especially isolated. It's affecting more, and I'm reading some things as I'm going along, so bear with me. It's affecting more of, of the people that have some kind of pre-existing condition than it is your, your typical healthy person. And so, so any, anytime you have a a health condition of any type of form, and you have to bear with me, I have dogs and stuff in the background. So, so kind of life is going on here at the Richie household.
Hi Shelley. Mama's. You got bunny ears too.
So, so the, the point that is, is there's, if you have medical conditions, please isolate yourself. There is a telemedicine thing that has not been promoted enough, I don't believe, but but there, every doctor in the state of Arkansas has been asked to participate in telemedicine versus you coming to their office. So before you go to your doctor's office, call them and ask them if they can do telemedicine. They've been encouraged to do this. No, they're not laying their hands on you. They're not listening to their stethoscope on your chest or is that sort of thing that you're used to, but they're not, they're not going to be anyway, if you go to their office more than likely. They're, they're doing telemedicine is a big thing and that's available through your local provider or your primary care physician, whoever that may be. I'm encouraging that a lot and we're encouraging that a lot from my, our stance at the health department as well. But that's kind of a, a catch up. If you all have any specific questions, feel free to send them to me email or through the pastor and I'll, I'll get back to you, you know, specifically. That's really all I can say from the forefront of where I sit in daily office. I do recommend that we keep our social distancing in our church, just from a board chair standpoint as well. I think we're doing great. I watched the service this morning. I was, I really, really enjoyed the service that y'all put on this morning. And it, you know, it makes my day to know that you're going behind the scenes and I know that the pastor has a lot of work that he puts into these. I'm just doing the, the Zoom and doing the, the Facebook Live stuff. I know that takes a lot of effort to go into that. It's different when you don't have a live audience in front of you or live congregation in front of you. I, I can can assure you, and I know he's, he's doing a lot. We talk weekly, if not more, just to make sure that we're all on the same page here. And I just want, you know, we're very transparent here at Salem. I want to keep that away. Pastor, if you want to take over, unless we have any specific questions, I'm not watching Facebook because I have my other phone on.
Sure. And if you're watching me do this with my head, I'm trying to do both here in case folks have questions. As I mentioned there, if you do have them, feel free to post them here. And as Jared mentioned, you're, you're welcome to email either of us. I went ahead and put the contact at Salem UMC Conway.org email address in there. If you have any questions, that might be a good way to, to funnel them that way. But if you have anything you would like to post here and ask us, you can certainly do that. Just to kind of maybe piggyback off of some things that Jared was sharing there. First of all, I want to say thank you. Yeah, I was supposed to be on vacation last week, which was kind of laughable the more we thought about it. And so I tried to lay low, but still it's, it's a unique time to be a pastor right now. In some ways it's more busy than usual because we're trying to figure out different ways to connect. We can't see each other face to face as often and I relish those times I run into you all out and we can stand six to 10 feet apart and still chat. So that's been fun here and there. But at the same time, I want to lift up Richie, Jared Ritchie and all the work he's doing too. He makes what I'm doing look like, you know, it isn't that big of a deal. So I appreciate you building me up, but for those who are working in our health professions and the medical field and they're on the front lines of this stuff on, on behalf of all of that, I want to say thank you. And as we continue to pray for them, as we continue to pray for the people who are keeping our grocery stores going, who are keeping kind of the essential things that need to go on, those who work for power companies, all that good stuff that keeps us, it's, it's really weird to think that we can be active, most of us by just staying at home and watching Netflix, you know? Leave it to Generation X kind of people. That's, that's my generation to think, oh, we can be active by not doing anything. So just to echo again to what he was saying there and certainly interrupt me Jared, if you have things to add, I'm going to share my screen here and attempt to give you some thoughts through a PowerPoint, I think. To our church members who are thinking in terms of feeling bad because you're in the vulnerable population, I want to assuage that guilt and say, stop feeling bad. Stay away. Take care of yourself, take care of your own health first. If I'm going to poke fun at my generation, I should poke fun at our older generation too. They're among the more vulnerable folks in this population, but they're also among the most stubborn. So you're the ones who want to get out and work and, and do things for your church and yet your kids are saying no. Listen to your kids. We'll, we'll get things covered otherwise. There we go. Some other things to continue to talk about is, is giving is, is certainly still important in terms of as United Methodists, we vow to faithfully participate in the church's ministries. And in some ways we get to do those better now than we have. Hopefully our prayer life is being honed in. Our presence is a little bit different because we're trying to figure out how to do that in different ways, online, through the phones, those sorts of things. But we want to continue to give our gifts to fund the ministry of this church and we're looking for ways that we can serve our neighbors, quite literally. I've challenged folks to go and see how your neighbors are doing. And then therefore we're being a witness to Christ in that realm. So um. We've given different ways to, to continue to, to give. I do want to say we're on track. I'm watching the first week of this was a really low week and then it's just kind of gradually getting better. So I'm very encouraged by that. And yet we want to continue to, to be faithful. As a matter of fact, if, if you can, are able to step things up at this time, we encourage folks who are able to do that. But here are several ways you can give, you can give online, you can text. There's the church center app, you can mail it. We've seen a lot of folks mail that because as I understand it, the way our giving online works is a certain percentage is you get a fee for that. So one way might be through the US mail in order to avoid that, or you can call or drop it by the office. And we can come and pick it up if you'd rather and we'll bring you a roll of toilet paper while supplies last has been our joke here, but so here are our office hours. We're physically going to be open from nine to noon. Again, certainly stay away if you can. But if there's any church business that you need to stop by and do, we encourage you to do that. Caroline has been amazing as she continues to be through all of this. And so she even has the phones forwarded to her in the afternoons on Monday, Tuesday and Thursday, so she can answer the phones. Where is, I'll post this too. You may or may not have the pastoral care emergency number. Certainly as we always say, if it's an actual emergency, call 911, right Jared? But if it's a pastoral care thing, we have a 501-327-2884 and all, I don't have a slide for that, but I'll post that in the comments here in a minute. I did want to make a comment about our food ministry and our, about especially our incredible folks who are keeping things going with the sharing fridge. That's kind of become our bread and butter right now. We want to continue to give to the sharing fridge, especially if you're at home and some folks are talking about the extra pounds they're going to be putting on. So one way to assuage that is to take some of that food that you're doing some extra baking or cooking and put some of it in the sharing fridge. So that's one way you can help with that. Our food pantry folks have wisely suggested, because we went through our food pantry supply rather quickly, is, is they, they want to make sure we keep the church in operation. So make sure that you're giving to the, the church first, so that we have a place to house a, a food ministry when this is all said and done. In other words, we're looking at different ways to creatively fund the food pantry portion because we want to get that up and going again. But it might just be as, as, as easy as if, if you can grab some extra canned goods, some extra non-perishables and then we put together some food for that week. But we're going to look into different food banks and different ways to, to fund that. So we can take that stress off of the church. So please, 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 the food pantry is saying give to the church first. And then if you can go on above and beyond to help with the food pantry and get, getting that open again, we want you to certainly do that. Some information about the neighborhood network. Hopefully you've had somebody call you from our, our new care team. So we've got several folks in seven key areas of Conway calling on folks just to check in, pray with one another. You all are amazing. Salem was already doing that before I organized anything formally. And so continue to check on one another in your small groups and your Sunday school groups in your already existing network, but know that we also have other on the care team that can help you connect. So we're going with you, good old fashioned phone tree in order to call on one another during this time. We're continuing in our series through the end of Lent here on the chosen. And so we're going to get creative with making sure we still have a Monday Thursday offering, a Good Friday offering for you to tune in on, on, online to participate in that. So Easter is going to be kind of strange this year. It seems as though we will not be meeting in person. So as a lot of folks are saying who practice Lent, Lent is a little bit longer than we had bargained for this year. And so we still celebrate or will celebrate the, the journey of, of Jesus to the cross and then to the empty tomb. And we know that there will be life on the other side of all this chaos that we're going through. You, again, you can watch our services online through the Facebook pages. The well will also be posting services on the Facebook page there. I should have mentioned the sharing fridge Facebook page. And if you didn't realize this, we have a YouTube channel as well. So if you want to pop on over to YouTube, we'll, we'll share some of those links as well. And you can subscribe to their, our YouTube page. We'll, we'll be putting content up there. One thing I'm really excited that we're working on is especially for folks who are stuck at home and looking for ways to connect is we're going to, in this format that you're seeing here, offer some Zoom content where you can participate like Jared and I are conversing here. In a, a thing I'm going to call cultivate your growth in April. So during the month of April, we're going to have something for you to do on Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays during the week. Tuesday will be a workshop. Wednesday will be some sort of worship. If you want to participate in that, like you have a, a song you'd like to offer or a prayer or you, you know, if you could video yourself, we, we would love to use that video. Otherwise we'll have some, just some song and some, some prayer and call that our midweek worship. And then finally on Thursday will be an online Bible study through the Zoom platform too. So more information on that to come, but we'll be having workshops on how, how to read the Bible, how to, how to study scripture, how to pray, how to share God's story, those types of things on Tuesdays. Wednesday's worship and then Thursday is Bible study. Having said that though, this first Thursday of April will be an orientation to that. So we'll share information about that. I was sharing with Jared too about how amazing the Holy Spirit is. Back in September, we planned on this series after Easter, which is called Asking for a Friend. Now these are the kind of, excuse me, I'm just starting to lose my voice. I'm not sick, just so you know. Asking for a friend, those kind of questions you would say, I've got this weird mole. Or actually a friend has a weird mole. What, what should he do? I'm asking for a friend. So these are very interesting. We've had some of you share what you're dealing with right now. And it's very fortuitous that we are having a series after Lent on how do we deal with loneliness, anxiety, depression? A lot of the things that you see listed there. So I'm, I'm really excited that God knew this before we did about what kind of things we should be considering after Easter. I think that's it. I'm going to share also in an email and things coming up, a some suggested devotions you can do from home. Have I unshared my screen or is it still up there? There we go. Okay, I do see at least one question. Bobby asked, how are the offerings? And I'm actually quite honestly very encouraged by how folks are stepping up to make sure they continue their offerings or even are, are giving a little bit more. So like I said, that first week was kind of as we expected, we didn't meet. There's something about coming to church and actually putting your offering in the offering plate that we do miss and some folks forget about that. So we have to encourage new ways to give, but it's steadily climbing back up to where we should be. Each week, as you know, we, we post what we anticipate the needs are to make the budget each week. And it looks like this Sunday might be one of the Sundays where we at least make it for that week. At the same time, the last two Sundays were kind of lower than normal. So we're on track, but we're also not on track. I don't know if that makes any sense. I don't know if Jared can put that, Jared could put that another way.
But it, it makes sense. We, we have X amount that we have to spend weekly on just, just our normal everyday expenses. And that's where that figure comes up that you, that the pastor posted, posts every week on, on our giving chart, if you will, or on our needs assessment. And so that being said, if we're below that, obviously we have to dip into two savings a little bit in order to make that money up. And, and so that's kind of where we, we need to stay at that line to where we can, if we're, if we're given and we, we have historically typically met that giving line. And so, so that keeps us out of that, that savings that we have and it helps us to provide what we're, what we're needing to provide for, for salary for the pastor and for keeping the lights on and just the different things that we have to do as a church. It's just has expenses. I, you'll hear me say this in the board 100 times. I hate to say it's a business, but we have to kind of treat it as though it is a business because we have expenditures that, that every business would have. For instance, we just happen to be in a unique business. That's all I have to, to add about that at this time.
The plus side is we are using the building less. So there are, we would hope our, our utilities will go down. It's also starting to warm up again. So the, the heat is, is not going to be on as much. As a matter of fact, we ought to turn it down anyway and be more responsible. I just, I guess I would add to that, that on the flip side, we're, we're being sure that we pinch as many pennies as possible to on the expenditure side of things. So if things don't need to be paid right now, we're not paying them. As a matter of fact, the, the bishop and the Arkansas conference gave us a, a month free of, of our, our tithe initiative. In other words, we don't have to tithe to the conference and the district at this time, but please continue to tithe to your church. Well Jared, that's about all I have. I'm not seeing any other questions at this time. Anything else we should add here?
I, I think that's about it. Like I said, if, if anybody has any questions, feel free to, to reach out to the pastor or to me. And I would add that, you know, if we're, we're kind of doing our board meetings kind of uniquely right now. So that may be something that folks may be interested in looking at as well. Some of those, obviously if it's an executive type session, we, we can't open those up to the, to the general public or the congregation, as it were, just by rule. But we'll, we'll be still continuing to meet as a board and trying to, you know, make decisions on even cutting costs as much as we can, even more so than we are, just so we will, will not be in a bind in the, in the end of this when it's, it's all said and done. Just please everybody continue to pray for what we're doing here. Pray for your neighbors, which seems like we're doing the right thing.
Absolutely.
Keeping, keeping us all in everybody's prayers and keeping everybody on your mind. It's it's a very unique time. I keep saying that's very unique, unique time that we're in church wise, unique time we're in in healthcare. And you know, there's obviously a storm on the horizon. And, and we'll, we'll get through it together. We just stay together at least six feet apart though. And then we'll, we'll, we'll be in the end, we can, you know, move that social distancing the amount of four feet hopefully, and then eventually be able to shake each other's hands when it's all said and done. And, and give hugs if you're the huggy type. So thank you pastor for all you're doing. I do want to do a shout out to the, the, the sharing fridge and personally, I want to thank my wife. She's been, been doing some of that or the majority of it right now. And she's training some other folks up to help her to kind of do that. Our places that are donating are still donating to the sharing fridge. And so that is a, you know, a blessing that, that they're giving us stuff, donating to their local community as well. She, she drives her truck up there and sometimes she can't see out the passenger door of her truck when she's coming back. And it's, it's kind of, kind of it makes my day when I see that sort of thing, when she tells me that in the evening. Well, I had a, a truckload in the toolbox and the bed of the truck full and obviously it won't all fit in the fridge. So we're parsing that out and she goes up there a few times during the day and make sure the fridge is full again. Once it gets emptied and I, I just can't say kudos enough to, to my wife for, for taking that on. So that the other folks that, that need to not be out right now are, are actually where they need to be with their families. And so, so thank you, Shelley for that.
Yes, thank you. And thank you to all the other volunteers that are keeping things going. I just want to reiterate again, for those in our more vulnerable population and those with health, health concerns, please, please, please let guilt go away. Take care of yourself first. Be healthy, stay at home. Let us help you connect in different ways if we need to. At the same time, for those of us who are able and willing to do things like Shelley is, if, if, if this is your time that you feel you need to step up and do that, that would be great. So we'll certainly take volunteers, but not at the expense of keeping yourself safe. Please, please only do, I mean, like my, my wife is, is a putting up with the fact that I, I have to do some work out of the house. And so that certainly makes her nervous when I have to go to the grocery store even. So she has some anxieties about that sort of thing, but some of us have got to work and Jared's one of those and, and Shelley's one of those that doesn't sit still. If you're one of those that don't sit still, we can put you to work. We've got some things for you to do. And so, but the, the rest of you, please don't feel bad. Please do not.
Absolutely.
You mentioned something, just in the extent of full disclosure, we are going to try and have a, a, not a town hall meeting, a, a board meeting this afternoon at three o'clock, just so you know that that's occurring. And if you want information about that, we'll be sure and share that with you. Typically those meetings would be open as Jared said, unless we go into an executive session. So if you want to, I'll, I'll probably record that too. Unless we decide what we're talking about is considered an executive session kind of thing. And so if you need access to that recording or to those minutes, we'll certainly make those available to you as well. So we'll be meeting at three o'clock, hopefully some of us this afternoon. I think that's it.
Think so.
Jared mentioned not shaking hands. So I want to encourage you to do something here, which is we can do an air high five. You know, from six feet away. If you like to have the sound, you can slap right here and it kind of makes it sound like you did a high five. So I, I, I know everybody's at home doing that right now. Okay. But we love you all and hang in there and we're praying for you. And if there's anything we can do to help you get through this time, we want to do that. So God bless.
Thank you.
Thanks Jared. And I think if I end the meeting here, it will end Facebook Live too. So I'll talk to you soon, brother.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.